I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
Present.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
At this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment this evening.
Graham Pupa first.
Now, you only have three minutes, Willie.
I know. Okay, Carla. Bill Repka, 127 Colfax Street. First of all, and that's not why I'm here, the mayor and the four council people, I've never told you this, but I appreciate your energy, the effort, and the time that you put in to help keep this great city going all the time. That's not why I'm here. The reason I'm here is I'm a supporter of the AMVETS, and after 26, I was an officer of the AMVETS at one point. And I understand that tonight you're going to talk about and maybe vote on saving some parking places for them when there's a lot going on at the event area over there. And I just want to say that I think that's the greatest thing in the world to do. We all know what both those organizations are here for. And I don't know if everybody knows this, but actually, the lot that we're asking for, the AMVETS owned at one time and gave it to the city so that we could develop that. So if you can put up some parking spots and protect them for the AMVETS and after 26, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
My name is Julie Grage. I'm the current commander down at AMVETS post. And I just want to thank you for the consideration to get these parking spots saved for us. A lot of the patrons that we have are older and don't really want to walk that far. I mean, I know we have the spot behind the AMVETS, but with the train tracks and stuff like that, it's kind of hard for some of them to get around. So we really appreciate it, and it would mean a lot to us to have some spaces saved.
David Mackey, not a city resident, but have a lot of my Monver rentals in here, so I appreciate all you guys do for us. I'm part of After 26 Depot Cafe, and again, I want to thank you. Tuesdays and Fridays get to be our worst days of the year, every week. And so I think this will help hopefully alleviate some of that. I'm hoping we can look forward to not closing off the north parking lot for the food trucks, because then any part we lose, we lose that. And same thing, a lot of our patrons are older, and to have them walk from the other parking lot makes it very difficult for them. So I appreciate support. You guys have been wonderful to us. We're making some good changes, and we want to keep moving forward. So thank you for all the effort. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have a minute from the regular meeting that was held on the 6th of February.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. And that takes us to communications in our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'd like to reintroduce to you and everybody Joe Verlin of Gaybridge &amp; Company. Gaybridge &amp; Company is the firm that does the annual audit of the city. Joe?
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's always nice to be in Cadillac. And as has been the case in previous years, the audit process went very smoothly. We were provided a set of financial statements and supporting schedules. And we went through and we verified the numbers that were provided to us. We confirmed and verified the numbers with Michigan Department of Treasury, Michigan Department of Transportation, various financial institutions. Everything checked out. We were able to verify the numbers. And just overall, very smooth and clean audit process. If you turn to page five, before I actually get into the audit report itself, I do want to take a minute to point out that the city received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this was the 37th consecutive year that the city has earned this designation. There are 50 cities in the state of Michigan that earned this award out of 275. So about 18% of the cities earn this. What it means is that, in addition to having your financial statements audited, you go the extra mile, and you have an introductory letter that's put together by Marcus, primarily Marcus. In addition to that, there is a statistical section that gets put together in the back end of the report that has another 20 pages of comparative data, demographics, tax base, key taxpayers, key employers, all kinds of useful information, up to 10 years' worth of historical data provided. On some of those schedules, it takes a significant amount of time to pull that information together. A lot of department heads are involved in that process. And the idea is to be very transparent with your financials, as well as related non-financial information, to give readers a good understanding of how your community is doing. And again, 50 out of 275 earned this designation. You guys submit it, not only do you prepare it, but you submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association. They have a committee of three people that vote on those reports. And if the quality and transparency requirements are met, the award is provided. So certainly, kudos to the city staff for making this happen. It really helps local units stand out in their community. If you go down to page nine in the 180-page report, and hopefully, it's not upsetting to anyone that I don't plan on covering all 180 pages tonight. But page nine has the paragraph that matters more than anything else. It's the second paragraph down. Because everything was verifiable and clean, we provided a clean opinion on your financial statements, or an unmodified opinion is the technical term. I always explain it as being clean. And we write, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial condition of the city as of June 30, 2022." And always should be the city's goal to have a clean opinion on your financial statements, but certainly does mean something to achieve it. We have had larger organizations with either qualified or adverse opinions because they weren't able to stand behind their numbers, and we weren't able to get comfortable verifying them. So kudos to the city staff for getting to that point and for maintaining a clean audit report. If you go now, two more pages to page 11, we get to a change in accounting principle paragraph. We don't see this too often, but every three to five years or so, this paragraph shows up in your audit report or in your independent auditor's report. And basically, what we're trying to do is make sure the readers of the financial statements understand that there was a new standard that was adopted during the course of the year, and it had an impact on the comparability of your financial statements. So during the year, Governmental Accounting Standard Board issued Statement Number 87, which is the new lease standard. And I'll show you how that is reflected in your financial statements. Essentially, we took the total value of the leases receivable all the way through 2036, which is how far those leases have been extended into the future. And we figured out that those are worth approximately $2 million, and then we recorded a deferred inflow. We kind of end up in the same spot that we started, but it does at least show readers of the financial statements. There's about $2 million of leases receivable over the next 15 years or so. And we're going to recognize that revenue ratably over the course of those 15 years. And if you go now to page 14, we get into the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. This section primarily is drafted by Owen and the city staff, and they do a wonderful job of providing financial highlights that show what some of the more significant financial achievements were during fiscal '22. It also has two-year comparative data, so the readers of the financial statements get an idea for some of the trends that you're reporting on your financial statements. And then there's narrative explaining reasons for those changes, significant changes in your revenues and expenses during the past couple of years. First bullet point shows that it's a theoretical number. If the city theoretically sold all of its assets, paid all of its liabilities off, there'd be about $35 million of net position left over. But that includes non-spendable things like the buildings and roads and equipment, things that you can't necessarily spend those assets. So it's a theoretical number for that reason. What does matter is the fact that your revenues exceeded your expenses by $1,362,492. So because your revenues exceeded your expenses, you're operating at a sustainable level. If a reader of the financial statements looks at these financials and asks the question, "Is the city better off financially at June 30, 2022 compared to 2021?", the answer is yes, by about $1,362,000. So you're trending in the right direction. These are back-to-back years of increasing net position for the city. So things are trending in a positive direction financially. Second bullet point down, now we're looking at the governmental funds of the city. So the first bullet point is long-term. We're looking at all the long-term assets, long-term liabilities. Second bullet point, now we're talking about fund balance. I would think of that as being your cash and your immediate receivables or your assets that get converted into cash within 60 days after the end of the year. So your total fund balances for your governmental funds came in just over $10 million. That was a decrease of $236,075 during the course of the year. So in other words, your cash out exceeded your cash in by $236,000, primarily because of the road projects and your major local street funds. So you had some unspent bond proceeds the city completed or worked through some of those ongoing road projects. For that reason, cash, your fund balance decreased during the course of the year. But when we look at your general fund, the general fund had an increase in fund balance of $605,225, which was about a 12.8% increase. So your most important fund had an increase of 12.8% during 2022. So that certainly was a good sign as well. Fourth bullet point, now we can see that of your total general fund fund balance, $3,719,960 was unassigned as of June 30, 2022. Your unassigned fund balance is the most important element of fund balance in your most important fund. That's how much the city has at its disposal to cover the day-to-day cost of running the city. You can use that for wages, utilities, supplies, things of that nature. $3.7 million, when we divide that by the annual general fund expenditures and transfers out, that's about 48.6%. So you have almost six months' worth of reserves sitting in your unassigned fund balance in your general fund. Very healthy. Not too much, not too little, right where the city should be at the end of the year. So healthy financial condition within your general fund. If you go down to page 18, the top schedule shows your comparative assets and liabilities for the past couple of years. And real quickly, I just wanted to point out, two rows up from the bottom, if you go all the way to the very last column, your unrestricted net position was $164,000. These are rounded to the nearest thousand. And if you go one column over to your left, June 30, 2022, your unrestricted net position came in at $2.6 million. So healthy increase in your unrestricted net position. That factors in not only your general fund, but all funds of the city, including your water and sewer fund. So healthy increase in your total unrestricted net position, which we would expect given the increase in your total net position. And then if you go one more page to page 19, this just shows your comparative revenues and expenses for the past two years. Again, just one row I wanted to point out here. If you go three rows up from the bottom, all the way to the very last column, the city had an increase in total net position across all funds of just under $2.4 million. And that number compares to just under $1.4 million for the 12 months ended June 30, 2022. So like I mentioned earlier, back-to-back years of increasing net position, so a very healthy sign. If you go now all the way to page 33, we get a look at the impact of the new lease standard that the city implemented during the course of the year. And this shows your business-type activities, assets, liabilities, and your deferred inflows and outflows. And if you look about five rows down from the top, you can see leases receivable in the Building Authority Fund. That very first column came in at $137,610. That represents the amount of lease revenues the city expects to collect in the next 12 months. So that should be the amount collected during fiscal '23 for the building lease. And then if you look another five rows down from there, your non-current leases receivable came in at $2,87,702. That represents leases receivable after '23 all the way through fiscal '2036. So again, just kind of gives you a general idea of what the total value is of those leases receivable over the duration of those lease terms. And then if you look about six, seven rows up from the bottom, we see a deferred lease revenues. So we put this asset on the books that equals about $2.2 million, and then we take it all right back off in a deferred lease revenue of about $2.2 million. And the reason that we do that, we're just trying to show readers, this is how much the city intends or expects to collect on those leases over the next 15 years or so. And of that amount, the full amount, $2.2 million, is going to be recognized as revenue ratably over those next 15 years. If you go now to page 35, this is a statement of cash flows for all of your business-type funds. And just wanted to real quickly point out the change in cash balances. Nothing needs to happen, but I think this is just useful information to be aware of. When you look at the very top section, this shows the cash provided by operating activities, primarily driven by your water and sewer fund, that second column over. And if you go to the total enterprise funds, you can see that your cash flows from operating activities, this is your charges for services minus your wages, your supplies, all of your direct expenses from operations, came in at a positive $533,306. So it's always nice to know that your rates are set at a level where you're generating positive cash flows. About halfway down the page, you can see that there was a net consumption of cash from capital and related financing activities. Again, if you go to the total enterprise funds, you can see that there was about $1.5 million used for capital and related financing activities. What that means is the city reinvested some of its cash in its infrastructure, primarily in the water and sewer funds. So altogether, when we look at, there were about $5.7 million of bonds issued during the year. And about $6.4 million of that, or $6.4 million was invested in water and sewer projects during fiscal '22. So altogether, $1.5 million approximately was used for those long-term infrastructure projects. And then if you look, the net cash in cash or the net change in cash and pooled investments was a consumption, again, in the total enterprise funds column, of $853,935. So your cash went down in your enterprise funds, but it's because of that water and sewer project. So it was very much intentional during 2022. Altogether, the city still had $3.2 million of cash on hand at June 30, 2022. So I think that statement of cash flows is just always good to be aware of that and see where your cash is coming from and where it's going to. Just a few more schedules to point out. If you go all the way to page 88, we get to the Schedule of Funding Progress for the city's police and fire pension plan. And these numbers are based on the same fiscal year-end as the city. So these are for the 12 months ended June 30, 2022. And the very first column shows the total pension liability, according to the actuaries, to fully meet the obligation to police and fire employees and retirees, is about $15.6 million. And then if you look about two-thirds of the way down, the planned fiduciary net position or the planned assets came in at about $12.2 million. And the difference being the net pension liability for the police and fire plan of about $3.4 million. And when we take your total assets divided by your total liability, the city's at 78.3% funded, better than average. On average, our clients are at 73%, so the city's about 5% better than average. When you look at 2021, a little bit discouraging because you were, the city was at 97.6% funded one year ago. Obviously, the reason for that being the net investment loss during fiscal 2022. Because the actuaries provided the valuation as of June 30, they were able to get one full year's worth of data included on the city's actuarial valuation. Halfway down the page, you can see the net investment income was a loss of $1,183,327, just a down investment year, obviously, during fiscal '22. That compares to fiscal '21, where we had, the city had a $3 million increase in your pension assets. So a dramatic swing. That's just the nature of how markets perform. Some years, it makes the numbers look great. Other years, it catches up. But over the course of time, we know it's going to generate about a 7% rate of return on those assets. So there's some ebb and flow inherent with these evaluations and the reporting of that net pension liability. If you go down to page 91, we get a look at the same schedule, but this is just for the MERS pension plan versus the police and fire. Here we see different results, and the reason is the MERS pension plan is a calendar year-end. So these numbers are based on December 31, 2021. And the market performance was substantially better for the 12 months ended December 31, 2021 versus the 12 months ended June 30, 2022. So same thing, total net pension liability, similarly, about $15.8 million. And the total assets or the planned fiduciary net position, about two-thirds of the way down, $12.2 million. The difference being a net pension liability of $3.54 million at June 30, 2022. If we take your total assets divided by your total liability, the city's at 77.5% funded. So pretty similar to where your police and fire plan is. However, halfway down the page, you can see that the city had net investment income of about $1.5 million on your MERS plan, which equates to roughly 14%. So very strong investment performance. It's going to catch up to the city on next year's report because the city's going to use the actuary evaluation for the 12 months ended December 31, 2022 on next year's report, and that's where those net investment losses will catch up to us. And then the last schedule I wanted to point out is on page 93. This is the net OPEB liability for the city. So the net OPEB liability is performed with a June 30 fiscal year, just like the city is. So these numbers align with the city's fiscal year-end. And the total OPEB liability, that top section came in about $4.35 million. And the planned fiduciary net position came in at about $3.9 million. The difference representing the city's net pension or net OPEB liability of about $456,000 at June 30, 2022. And when we take the city's total assets divided by your total OPEB liability, the city's at 89.5% funded. That's much stronger than most of our local units. Most of our local units don't have anything set aside to cover their OPEB liability. So very healthy in terms of funding your total OPEB liability. So your net pension liabilities are both ahead of schedule, better than average, as is your net OPEB liability. And those are the highlights that I have, but I'm certainly happy to take any further questions the council might have.
Come on, Sid. Good. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, no problem at all. Glad to be here.
Drive very safe.
Will do.
And congratulations, Carol.
Yeah, nice job.
Okay, we have several appointments this evening, Carrie.
We do. We have a reappointment of Ken Bigelow to a two-year term on the Construction Board of Appeals. Ken Bigelow has expressed his interest in continuing to serve on the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term, and he has been a member of this board since 2015.
I would make a motion to approve the reappointment of Ken Bigelow to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The second one we have is for Connie Houck for a two-year term on the Construction Board of Appeals. She has expressed her interest in continuing to serve on this board for another two-year term, and she was originally appointed in 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Connie Houck to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next one we have is another reappointment to the Construction Board of Appeals for Randy Norman. He has expressed his interest in continuing his service on the Construction Board of Appeals for another two-year term, and he was originally appointed in 2015.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Randy Norman to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2025.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next one we have is a reappointment for John Sari to a two-year term on the Construction Board of Appeals. He has expressed his interest in continuing his service on the Construction Board of Appeals for another two-year term, and he was originally appointed in 2015.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of John Sari to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term to expire on March 2, 2025.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next one we have before you is a reappointment of Brian Warner to a three-year term on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Brian has expressed his interest in being reappointed to the SERB as a member on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term, and he has been a member on the board since 2017.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Brian Warner to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on March 6, 2026.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Let's see. The next one we have is a reappointment of Michelle Carter to a three-year term on the Cadillac Historic Districts Commission. Michelle has expressed interest in continuing her service on the Cadillac Historic Districts Commission for another three-year term, and she was originally appointed in 2017.
I'll move to reappoint Michelle Carter to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on March 20, 2026.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
And the last one we have is a reappointment of Curtis Schultz to a four-year term on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. Curtis has expressed his interest in continuing his service on the Downtown Development Authority for another four-year term. He was originally appointed in 1999.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Curtis Schultz to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 1, 2027.
Support. Thanks for all the years.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries. It's really wonderful to see all of these people who have served on these committees, volunteering their time and wanting to continue, to come back and continue. I think that's really wonderful. So big thank you. Okay, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item under the manager's report this evening is a request to designate parking by After 26 Depot Cafe in the AMVETS facility located at 127 West Cass Street as parking specifically for their use when either of those operations are actually open for business. The council packet includes a graphic that indicates 10 parking spaces, four of which currently are handicapped, are all highlighted in yellow along the western elevation of the After 26/AMVETS facility that we would be looking at designating as parking for their use. The issue or concern frankly that the city concurs with the tenants on is that there really is a unique parking situation that happens there, given the proximity to the market, the number of events that take place in the market, and the fact that they're all within that same parking area versus parking that happens in the plaza or other public lots. And the impact that they have on adjacent businesses is far less in terms of access to parking. Direct access to their parking, especially for those that have ambulatory issues, really gets pressed because of the railroad tracks that are on the other side of the building and the inability for there to be another pedestrian at-grade crossing put in place. The only way to do that would be to remove one. And there isn't a single pedestrian at-grade crossing that we would look at removing along the line. And so there is no way to create another pedestrian crossing pad that would be accessible for people that want to go to that facility. There are two conditions that are listed in the request for your consideration that we would like... that we would like, staff would like council to consider as a part of the approval. The first one just simply identifies again the ten parking spaces. The second one simply states how the city would be able to retract on an as-needed basis, the designation. We would obviously work with the tenants at one twenty-seven West Cass Amvets and After Twenty-Six. If there was a need to do that, I can't, other than a couple of times a year where there might be significant citywide special event where we would have to look at pulling some of that back, like the Arts Fest or something to that nature. I can't think of another instance where we would look at doing that, but we would obviously work with the folks that are at that property accordingly, so.
The other accessible parking spaces are on the far side of the market, and how many are on that other side? I think there's only a couple, aren't there?
Here?
Because there's, how many are right there? Yeah.
So there's four handicap spots that are there.
Right.
I don't know how many additional handicapped are within that parking area. But if we need to create more, we can certainly do.
You mean on the west, you mean from?
On the west side.
Pavilion itself?
On the.
Four right in front of us?
Right.
And that's it?
On the other side.
Yeah, right, but the other side of the farmer's market. By the, I think there's only two over there.
I, yeah. You said that we could create some more handicap over there?
In fact, if you wish to direct me to do that as a part of your consideration, I'm happy to do so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the designation of the ten parking spaces for the After Twenty-Six Depot Cafe slash Amvets as presented with conditions and ask staff to look into the necessity for additional handicap spaces on what would be the far east side of the market.
Either there or on the west side against the building.
Yeah, I put in at their discretion.
Just to add more handicap spaces there because that's an issue.
Just a point for clarification, if I may, Mayor and council. If you want to authorize us to add additional spaces, I would like that a part of the motion. Otherwise, we'll.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's right.
As needed.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yeah.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
That's a total change of what I was thinking when I came in.
Well, yeah, but your point is.
That was, I was worried because when you take out all the handicap parking places, then, you know. Where do you park?
That's a good observation.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item is a request regarding bids that came in for Lake Management Consulting Services. Two bids were received. One is through Restorative Lake Sciences. The second is through Progressive A and E. The city has experience working with both firms. The city is currently working with Restorative Lake Sciences, and our recommendation this evening would be to continue working with Restorative Lake Sciences. They, as Progressive, have been great to work with, but they certainly have the most up-to-date information regarding our lake and our, in the local ecosystem. And I do believe they still also work with the Lake Mitchell Group as well, and would be the recommendation this evening to award the contract for professional lake services in accordance with their proposal. We do have funds available in our Lake Management Treatment Fund. The bid proposal is showing how it's ten thousand in twenty-twenty-three, ten-five in twenty-twenty-four, and ten thousand five hundred in twenty-twenty-five. Beginning in twenty-twenty-six, there would be annual automatic renewals unless either party chose to walk away, so.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for professional lake management services to Restorative Lake Sciences in accordance with their proposal.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next request is regarding the purchase of vehicles, and I'm going to do my best to try to be as concise as I can, and then Owen will jump in, I know, and save me if necessary. But sort of a long story short, if I can do that, we've been plagued by post-pandemic related supply chain issues and access to vehicle issues, and it's no surprise that dealers that are out there, even dealers that are a part of this, the state bidding system or MyDeal, are, you know, much more willing to sell vehicles to consumers at much higher rates than what otherwise they are able to sell vehicles to municipalities for at pre-negotiated, much lower rates. And so just a rather recent example is that we have one truck that we tried to get that was actually never built, and then another one that we tried to get that was apparently built, but built completely to a different specification, one that would have been more for a consumer versus a municipal work truck. And so, you know, as we are now finding ourselves somewhat behind the eight ball between the Public Works Department, the Utilities Department, and now starting to get a little bit behind the eight ball again with the Police Department, the request that we're bringing forward this evening is authorization for us to acquire a combination of work trucks between our operational sections, Public Works, Utilities, as well as another police pursuit vehicle or PPV vehicle for the Police Department. We do have funds all available on hand between the General Fund, the Water and Sewer Fund, and the Stores and Garage Fund in which we would be using those funds to acquire those vehicles. We also have identified a MyDeal dealer named Todd Wenzel, is that?
Yeah, that's correct.
Todd Wenzel that happens to have work trucks and a PPV vehicle as well, all ready to go. So almost like kind of hitting the proverbial lottery, we can do it. Owen, is there anything that you'd like to clarify or just add additional information?
Yeah, just two things as a note. The reason these trucks were available is they were ordered by other municipalities, but they took so long to come. A lot of them were not able to still have the appropriation available and backed out of the purchase. So through a really good kind of stroke of good fortune, we called right when this was happening, and they had all these in stock. So literally, we could have these in a couple of weeks. The two that we didn't get that were approved in February of last year, one is the dump truck, and the one that we're getting now is all built and all ready to go, and it's a little bit cheaper than the one even that was approved last year. So that's all good. All of these have been scheduled over the last year or two. With the exception of the police vehicle, that was actually going to be in the CIP for next budget year. But as we called around the Fords, most of those police orders are getting canceled because they're just building them for retail customers, the explorers. And so they don't even know when the order's going to open, and then it'd be months after that. So we'll be, if approved back, we'll have to amend that into this year's budget before the end of the fiscal year. It doesn't kick us over the appropriation in total yet, but we would be back as a budget amendment to put that in this year for the purchase of the vehicle instead of next year. But we're taking advantage of a vehicle that's in stock, and we could have within a couple of weeks here. So it really is a good timing for us. All of these are available, and we are asking then. The last bullet point on the communication, we do need a couple more. We haven't bought trucks for about three years. I think we've bought one or two trucks. So we're hoping that once they get their inventories all reconciled between what we've bought and what they've sold to others and what they may still have left, that there might be a couple more available in this price range. And the last thing is, these all come at the prices that are on the list in the communication. Includes all of the, we got to put plows on a couple, and we got to get a service body, and we can get a extended warranty out to five years for about twelve hundred bucks for this price, and that's included in the price cited. So overall, all around a really good deal. We've been warned by the dealers and by the state that it's about a ten thousand dollar price increase with any new orders moving forward and about seven to eight at least on the police vehicles. So good timing for us.
So what becomes of the vehicles that will be coming out of the fleet?
Yes, so, good question. There's, I mean, they're not worth much, to be honest with you. Some of them, in the DPW, there's a little bit of life left in them. We have some Parks trucks that are, the bodies are about ready to fall right off them. So those will just be auctioned off. Typically, we can get, you know, a thousand to two thousand, sometimes three, out of those old trucks. So they'll either be auctioned, most will be auctioned, one or two will be passed down from DPW into Parks.
I like the idea with your first five, you say where they're going, what department?
Yep.
The two additional trucks was for forty to fifty-five thousand. There's no mention of who's getting those.
Yep, good question. Sorry, my computer went into lock here, so. One for sure is DPW, and I think the other is Utilities, but it depends on what it is also. They both need them. So if something comes available that more meets the spec, like a single cab long box of the DPW, it would go there.
Okay, so it's going to Utilities?
Depending on what it is, yeah, depending on what it is.
And then the last one that you're mentioning for two thousand twenty-four is definitely going to be a police vehicle?
The, in the, in that last paragraph, yeah, before the recommended action, they do have one of those available.
And that is going to the Police Department?
That is a Police Department patrol vehicle that'll be added to the daily frontline patrol fleet. Yep.
All right.
The, when I added it up, it's a total request for us to approve four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And while I'm hearing great information, this is what I'm always concerned about, getting in my packet to vote today for an expenditure of four hundred and eighteen thousand before we have more background information. Are we harmed with our work session coming up to table this at the work session so we can see that?
Most likely, they'll be gone, yeah. I mean, this literally happened this week. Two of these were already approved a year ago.
And those don't bother me. We've considered those and put an amount on them.
And the others, you know, two or three of the others are, again, in this year's capital budget. So they would have just been a bid typically back three or four years ago. They'd have been a bid, and they'd have come to you on the night we would ask to approve the purchase.
And that's my second question. Are we, we're not having any competitive bidding done on this before we're making almost a half-million-dollar decision?
Yep, and so they're all State of Michigan MyDeal pricing, which the state then goes through their competitive bidding and vetting process, so.
They're all MyDeal vehicles through a MyDeal dealer, which is through the state bid process. And as Owen said, this all just came about to us. So as quick as it came to us, we're bringing it to you guys for consideration.
I just, I always want to be careful, especially when we have this amount of money. And I don't, I don't feel, I think the reasons you've given, Owen, are good. I'm not arguing those, but I still don't know I have enough to approve four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the purchase.
Well, they, I mean, like, the dealer got a call literally five minutes after we asked them to kind of put our name on one, wanting that same vehicle. And we had reserved it with the hope of approval and an order for tomorrow. So really, these would have been off of an inventory list within, you know, within a day or two, so.
I mean, it would not bother me to craft a motion for the two vehicles that we had pre-approved because we had already gone through that. I'm just concerned about the balance of the request without more information.
What, just ask, what additional?
Well, I'm hearing we're getting some of what vehicles would be replaced and where we thought that it would fit in in the process, and then the total amount. That's information I didn't have before right now. This is what I've talked about in the past. I went time to consider a purchase of that size rather than coming in and getting the information right now and saying, let's approve this large of a purchase.
So does this represents, like you said, two vehicles that we approved last year? Two vehicles that would be coming up this year? Vehicle for two thousand twenty-three. What about, is there extra vehicles that I'm missing in there? That's pretty much their last year's vehicles, this year's vehicles, and then looking ahead one year, we want to scoop them all in.
And then the police patrol vehicle was going to be proposed in the budget for next year as part of our regular replacement. But in speaking with the Ford dealer on their vehicle and then the same Todd Wenzel on the availability of police patrol vehicles, we were concerned that it would be, you know, we didn't know even when the other orders would be opened. And then we were being warned of eight thousand dollar minimum increases on police patrol vehicles when that ordering window would have opened up, and then you would have had the lead time to order it, build it, hopefully get it. By the time we got it striped and outfitted, it probably would have been late in the fiscal year, if not even into the very next fiscal year. So it was kind of a take advantage of one that's available at current year, at current year pricing, before it's gone.
Yeah, it is unusual that we're buying, like you said, three years' worth of vehicles all in one bid, but I definitely understand the circumstances, so.
Supply chain is ugly right now.
The cost of these is not going to go down. And when you have an opportunity like this that just falls into place, you know, I hear that it's a big expenditure, but this is going to be an even bigger expenditure over time. And so sometimes you have to spend money to save money. So I, you know, and I know that the vetting for MyDeal has always been superb for as long as I've been here, and we use MyDeal for other things, and it's always proven to be the best possible price that you could get. Knowing what the market is like and what it's projected to be, I think this is a really reasonable request. It is a big amount of money, but let's add those several thousand dollars, you know, ten thousand dollars or more per each over time, and that's an even bigger amount of money. Considerably bigger amount of money.
How many years does this cover us for, Owen?
Yeah, for sure, for two years.
Two years before we'll need more?
Yep.
Okay. Twenty-six?
Well, last year and the current year. And then as of next fiscal year, we'll begin to need some, you know, a couple more, so. I think our newest truck in the DPW, besides the one that we bought for a supervisor last year, is about a two thousand sixteen.
My old truck?
One of them, that's one of the newer ones.
There you go. I took care of it, too. Anyway.
Take good care.
I understand councilperson King's concern at the last minute.
Well, and I don't know, and again, Owen, I'm not saying anything's wrong, but if these vehicles are all left over because people didn't take them, how does that compare to the market, too, for people who are looking to get municipal orders? I just don't have the information as to whether this is the best deal or not. And again, my biggest concern, which I've said before, when I'm spending the public's money, I don't like to have a decision of this size put in our packet without discussion or additional information, even if we had to do a special meeting and be asked to make approval on what we guess the best deal is or what we guess might be out there. Those aren't hard facts when we're spending citizens' money.
But that's what MyDeal does. They look at what's out there, and then that's what you have done. And the ones that we didn't get last year were because they are not available, and the ones for this year, because the vehicles, and what you said about municipalities that have lost the ability to get them because it's been so long waiting for them, is, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's in the best interest of the citizens of Cadillac to just let the fleet languish and become more and more expensive over time because this came to us in what you don't see as a timely fashion, although it was just presented by MyDeal. And MyDeal vets everything. They don't just take, they take the lowest bids. They offer the best deal for municipalities. That's why, that's why we participate with MyDeal.
We are the fiduciary that has to make the final decision whether we think MyDeal gives the best deal or not. gets the best deal or not. It's our duty to vet what we get to decide when and how much we should spend. And I, even, even in a situation like this, I wouldn't be bothered if more information comes in and we need a special meeting to vote on it, to grab the deal. I'm saying, when I get a request for four hundred and eighteen thousand, it's in the packet to decide tonight, and I didn't have, again, good information from Owen until right now, but I still want time to think about it. I think it's irresponsible to spend that level of money without making sure we know it worked.
And Sam is happy to help. We just need to know what additional information you want.
Owen, when did, what, what day was it when these bids came through and you knew the numbers?
It was last week. I mean, we were, I was, I was on the phone with Ken, I mean, five minutes before I wrapped up the communication. We, we, we dealt with this Todd Wenzel, and then we called three, three other dealers, and in fact, we were prepared to recommend a, a cabin chassis for the Utilities Department at forty-eight thousand, and then Todd Wenzel from another dealer that they had at Todd Berger and.
But what are we looking at, last Wednesday or Thursday or when?
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday?
Yep. Some of them, we had a little bit earlier in the week, but nothing the week, as of the week before, did we have confirmed, so.
And Thursday was packet day.
Right, so that came to us the day you got the information.
With other calls coming from other municipalities. So I, I certainly understand. However, I think if we, we didn't have any, um, advance notice of this, these, these vehicles were shipped into this dealer, and, um, everything came through right, right at the end, so.
Again, we're here, we being staff, we're here to help Council in any way, shape we can. We have no control over the dealer holding, not holding, you know, the units. I think, you know, as our Finance Director communicated, they're expecting a phone call from us tomorrow morning to let him know how, how the Council's consideration went. Um, just a couple of things to bear in mind, you know, we're happy to call a special meeting, but I, I wanna be able to give you an, a deliverable, you know, if there's something more that you wanna see, if, it just needs to be articulated so I can make sure that we can try to provide that. Um, and then the second thing is, is, is our Finance Director commented on, is that at least in regard to the, um, uh, to the, uh, police pursuit vehicle, the, the PPV, um, that will require an adjustment to the budget before the end of the current fiscal year, which ends June thirty. So as we go through, uh, if Council does look at considering approval tonight, remember that we will be coming back forward later this fiscal year with a request to amend the budget accordingly to accommodate that change.
I'm gonna make the, um, motion to approve the authority to participate in the My Deal Cooperative Purchase Plan and to purchase up to seven new trucks for the Department of Public Works and the Water and Sewer Department, and one police patrol vehicle from Todd Wenzel GMC of Westland.
Is, is there a cap on the spending, seeing that that motion doesn't have even a dollar figure in it, uh, in relation to all those vic, uh, figures for vehicles?
What would be the high cap that you need? Most of these vehicles seem to have a actual price attached to them, um, with the exception of the two additional trucks, and then the potential, uh, the police patrol vehicle is at around forty-two, so that has an estimate, so they do all have estimates. So if you wanna calculate a cap of those one, two, three, four, five, plus the fifty?
Four eighteen seventy-nine.
Um, it's four eighteen, the, um, so it's four nineteen the appropriate cap then, Owen?
I mean, that, that would include the?
Extended warranties?
I'm, I'm just thinking the, yeah, so three oh eight, um, would be the five trucks and the, the police patrol vehicle. Um, and then, so the, on the, on the higher end of fifty-five for the other two trucks, and I, we don't know if these are even gonna be available, anything. Um, and so that would leave about fifty-five thousand each, um, for those two additional trucks, and that would be about four nineteen.
I'm gonna amend the motion, um, to include a cap of four hundred and nineteen thousand.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Now, we're gonna talk about Canadian goose.
Yes. So this is a good news, this is a good news, bad news?
Yeah, I know, for the, bad news for the geese.
Well, bad news for the geese, uh, but it's also.
Another summer like we had last.
Yeah, it's also a good news, bad news for the community as well. Um, for those of you that, and Council that may not recall me mentioning, or those at home that may not have seen any news coming out of the state, uh, the State of Michigan has once again canceled, uh, their, uh, the ability for municipalities to get the correct permitting to do essentially goose or geese roundup, uh, which is really the most effective way, uh, to remove, um, the, the birds from your area and relocate them in other ecosystems far enough away where hopefully they won't come back, uh, during, you know, the, the, the sort of spring, summer, uh, season. Um, so that's the bad news part. Uh, the good news part is that there's still the ability, uh, of doing, uh, a relocation or removal of the eggs and nests, uh, and that is what we're before Council this evening, asking you to consider, which would be a resolution, uh, that the state requires, uh, regarding the Canada goose nest and egg destruction, uh, and roundup program of those, um, accordingly.
We are going to go looking for goose eggs?
Yep, we do that every year. Did it last year as well.
I've done it.
Yeah, and it's hard. Sometimes you find them, sometimes you don't.
I never found one. They're all in the swamp behind what used to be Marlins or Gulf Gas Station, where you can't walk. But anyway, we gotta do what we gotta do.
So they're smart geese?
Yeah, they are. They, I know, and mean.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the authority to participate in the, oops, let's get to the right page. Motion to adopt the resolution, uh, to participate in the Canada goose nest slash egg de- destruction and the roundup and hold programs.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening.
Good evening. Mike Solomon, representing Restorative Lake Sciences, and we just appreciate Council's continued support and look forward to working on the lake and with your staff. Your staff's been very supportive of the program. Um, I'll comment about, uh, Canadian geese. You know, the ones we have here are called the Gigantia, and they poop about a pound a day. It's very high in phosphorus, and a pound of phosphorus will grow five hundred pounds of algae. So when we look at the algal blooms that we have in the fall, uh, I think a lot of it can be attributed to that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. That's a fun question.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, should anyone have anything?
Um, last week, the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council met and, um, saw in four new members, and there's a couple more waiting in the wings, so, uh, we are a healthy organization and, um, really looking forward to working with the youth this year and with the city.
Just a couple of quick comments. It was a tough call with, uh, Mr. King. It'd be nice if we had time to talk about it. Didn't look like we did. We had to pull the trigger, like you said, and My Deals have always been the best, so. There's that, and then also on the lighter side, on Thursday nights at seven at Willow, there's a chess club that meets there. So I dabble in that. It's a form of self-flagellation, but I'm not any good at it.
Don't play with them, Wilson.
But I, I enjoy playing it. So come join me at seven at Willow and beat me at chess. Okay, thank you.
I'll just say, and I thank everybody's consideration on that issue, I would hope that in the future, and I wanna stress this, if there's an emergency issue, reach out to Council. I don't care if it's over the weekend, I don't care what it needs to do. You're not pulling us on our vote, but you need to give us information so that we can decide what discussions necessary. Uh, and I think it's very legitimate to reach out if there's an emergency. I will say again, I do not wanna be surprised by major purchases without information and without discussion ahead of time. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Good night.